Okay, if everyone will please stand by invocation and pledge their allegiance to you leader in this congregation.
Yes, let us pray. Father, we come this morning just thanking you, Lord, and blessed to be able to come out today. And we thank you for this day and, Lord, God has you to bless our meeting today, Lord, and those things that are done, Lord, pleasing in thy sight and are blessed unto your people. We thank you, Lord, of our nation, of our state, and our county. We ask your blessings upon us now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. At this time, I would like to call the Gates County Board of Commissioners to order for our regular meeting on November 1st, 2017. First amount of business is approval of amendments for our regular meeting on October 4th, 2017, our work session on October 4th, 2017, and our emergency meeting on October 6th, 2017. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the events identified with the noted corrections that have been sent to the court. And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion was made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, adjustments to the agenda before we get started. We do have some under new business. Number 13, to add on the new business, awarding contract for 1 and 2 for wastewater system. Number 14 is the lottery application. And number 15 is for budget amendments 10 and 11. Okay, in addition to that, because of commitment by Mike Callister, we would like to move the awarding of the contracts for 1 and 2 for wastewater system up before the public hearing, because he has another meeting to go to as well, that's three hours away. So we'll just put that under item administrative reports before the public hearing.
As to awarding the contract for...
1 and 2 to wastewater system. Did everyone get the adjustments? Did I have a voice spoken?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Motion was made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Okay, delegations. Do you have any unauthorized delegations? None. Okay, then, of course, we have a nice delegation to Gates County, Georgia Nursing Home, the Community Advisory Committee, Brandy, is not here? No. Okay. Good morning. Good morning, Libri. If you'll state your name, please.
Good morning, Fay Darden Smith, and I am the chairperson of the Joint Gates County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. And I am presenting the annual report for the fiscal year 2017. The members of the Community Advisory Committee are Vivian Britt Harper with the Hossville District, Arlen Pink's Gates District, Margaret Welch, Wither School, Sundberg, Corritic District, Ann Harper Howell, Your District, Bernice Johnson, Gates County Member at Large, and myself, the Gatesville District. What I will do is possibly go over the report with all of the things that we have stated in the annual report. Were all the homes in the county served by the committee? Yes, they were. Describe educational efforts by the committee. We had training sessions four times this year conducted by the region's long-term care ombudsman designed to keep our joint CAC abreast of recent rules and regulations affecting nursing home and assisted living facilities in North Carolina. We discussed during training the impact of these rules and regulations regarding residents' bill of rights. B, we participated in seminars regarding long-term care resident bill of rights. We held monthly meetings to discuss, et cetera, residents' bills of rights and different other concerns with the facilities serving the long-term care residents in Gates County. We rarely discuss periodicals regarding new trends in long-term care treatment. Three, describe community involvement by the committee. The joint CAC directs the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors Incorporated to put on programs at the county's long-term care facilities which are designed to coincide with red letter dates and holidays for these facilities' long-term care residents. The church ambassadors then request funding for these programs if required from "We Are Commended of Gates Incorporated" to support the joint CAC's approved programs. These programs are designed to enhance the residents' quantity and quality of life at Accordius Health and Rehabilitation Center and Gates House Assisted Living Facility. Describe problems encountered by the committee. Joint CAC members, most, not all, fail to prepare activity reports in a timely manner. And this is basically coming from the chairperson. Joint CAC members may not be fulfilling their necessary bill of rights duties regarding friendly visits to our county's long-term care facilities. And I put this down because by us being appointed as CAC members, the residents at each facility should have some familiarity, if not by name, when we go in because of our responsibility to visit the facilities mandated by the state. There continue to be inequities amid the entire community's involvement with long-term care facilities. A committee meeting space is necessary at both facilities. Was the committee involved in brief procedures? No, we were not. Summarize the strengths and weaknesses of the facilities in Gates County. First, I will deal with Gates County Assisted Living Facility. Number one, it lacks a multipurpose room. It lacks a sufficient telephone switchboard. The new administrator shows a strong compassion for the facility's residents and employee morale. The activity director shows an knowledge of the facility's mission, elderly assisted living, and memory care. She demonstrates each discipline that has its own special needs regarding the various activities. Now, this is Accordius Health and Rehabilitation Center nursing home. Structural renovations are in progress, aiming toward enhancing the residents' quantity and quality of life. The facility has an active residents' council. The facility has a high staff turnover. The facility lacks an adequate method of residents' transportation. Laudering of residents around the nurses' station. Unsecured main entry-exit door to the facility. Facility still lacks a multipurpose room. Too much activity other than eating and serving occurs in the facility's dining hall. The dining hall is not adequately maintained for the residents' health and safety. The facility's choice of residents' food service fails to meet certain resident requirements or what have you, resident dissatisfaction. And the activities need to be more structured to improve residents' quality and quantity of life. Other comments. Other community and civic groups, including churches, need to be involved with both facilities at times other than Thanksgiving and Christmas. Commissioners, please revisit, reimburse under travel expenses for the joint CAC members. And due to the events of Hurricane Harvey, Irma, and Maria, the joint CAC recommends evaluation of statewide emergency action plans for all of the long-term care facilities. This ends the report. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you for all you do with Kania and your community members. We certainly appreciate everything that you do. Are there any questions for the board?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. I'd like to just bring some things up for the ambassador to certainly consider and wonder if it's ever been complained of. Have patients ever complained to our ambassadors as in the report of not receiving their medication?
No, they cannot complain to the ambassadors as such. They have to complain to the CAC members, which are appointed by the Gates County Commissioners. And then what we do, once we get that complaint, we pass it on to Brandy Jordan. We cannot write up complaints now because of the new rules and regulations that will be affecting the nursing home that went into effect July 12th. But we will consider that concern.
With your visitation and with your closeness with the residents and patients, I think that would be, I think they would probably let you know.
Yes.
And subsequently, then you could let the staff know, because I think that could be an issue in some places.
Okay, we will certainly look into that. We are basically, we're trying to be on top of things. We were given a mandate that we cannot write up any complaints anymore. They have to be given to us verbally, and then, as CAC members, we pass them on to Brandy Jordan, as I reiterated, and within three to four business days, they have to be acted on. That is a mandate by the state.
Does Ms. Jordan let you know as ambassadors if she has received those type of human rights complaints?
Yes, we have to, yes, yes. And basically, we are the route where she gets the grievances. Recently, the residents' council at Accordius has invited us to sit on their resident council meetings because they did have a lot of grievances that we had to fumble to Ms. Jordan. But hopefully, things will improve. And the strengths and weaknesses are not there to attack them, but is to have a better quality of life for the residents who are there, because that is their home, and the state is implementing new rules and regulations, whereas, well, commissioners, as you know, the appointments now, we have to be certified by the state to serve on this particular board. And if we do not perform our duties, we have to attend 25 percent of the mandated meetings, training sessions, et cetera. We have to fulfill volunteer hours, and these are some of the reasons that we asked that you revisit just traveling expenses for the CAC members, because we now have two facilities that we have to be in charge of. And four times a year, we have to do an unannounced walkthrough that becomes public record. The long-term care ombudsman gets one, the copy comes here, and it goes to the state. And they clock the hours that we actually put in at each nursing facility as CAC members.
Okay, any additional questions?
Yes. Do you know if the state has a rating system for the long-term care facilities, like this facility is an A, B, C, or D? Something like your restaurants have ratings. Now, that way, it would seem that you could tell which facilities are considered five-star, four-star, whatever. Is there any kind of rating system that you're aware of?
Yes, I don't know whether it's an American rating system, but we are to peruse the state survey book that is in each facility. And right now, Accordius is not really where it needs to be. There are, as generally as I can, there is a lot that they have to do to bring the facility up to standards. They are doing the renovations that we see that are going on. But in doing renovations, it is important that the residents have a good quality of life. And when you have a very high staff turnover, there is not consistency in the type of care that the residents receive. And that is one of our main complaints, very, too much, the high staff turnover. And we hope that they are working on that.
I think it would be good for commissioners if we could somehow see what that rating system is, and then see where our associates fall within that.
I think that...
Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me, my husband just told me there is a national rating system, and...
I think we could probably look that up.
Yes, it's not really, it's not really good.
I think it's like, if it's a sufficient, or I mean, or any, it's not A, B, C, D, or V, so I think we don't want to be... Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you again for all y'all do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to administrative reports. Madam?
This is for September 25th to October 19th. Sprayville, two bids were received for each advertised contract for the Sprayville project. EnviroTech and Palace Point received both bids based upon the information. Contract 1 bid was $588,187.50. Contract 2 bid was $1,900,529.25. Bid approval and acceptance is later on the agenda. Historic courthouse information provided by Andrew Construction is in your packet and will also be discussed later. Courthouse roof. Pre-bid meeting was held September 25th for the roof of the courthouse. On October 6th, two bids were received. Le Face Construction Company, LLC, was selected as the lowest responsible bidder with the winning bid, $224,000. The anticipated length of time to complete the construction is 120 days, and Le Face would like to begin work in November. They were actually here yesterday and actually indicated it would possibly be beginning of December before all of the plans were completed. School construction. The Board of Education received plans for Central Middle School. Commissioners approve the need-based school grant application in the amount of $2.5 million with all money being used for new construction. The county audit is not complete. Based upon conversations between the school board chair, Felton, Chair Hoffler, Jody Cox, Ted Cole with Davenport, and myself, we anticipate the earliest the county can appear for the LGC from on approval is February 2018. Salary study. All full-time employees are to complete an employee questionnaire for the salary study, which is being conducted by the MAPS group, and they were all turned in on October 25th. The MAPS group will conduct employee meetings in November and make a full report by January 2016. American Legal was selected as the lowest responsible bidder for the codification project, which is to codify all Gates County ordinances. The cost is $12,000. The project will last through this fiscal year. And on October 18th, Melissa Lawrence not attended an NCACC risk management meeting where preparing for an emergency was discussed. Do you have any questions?
Yes, the earliest regular appeal before the LGC is paperwork.
Yes.
And our grant is supposed to be utilized by December 31st. So what is the, what are the thoughts on that as far as, we're hoping we're going to get an extension, but...
Mr. Felton said he has a verbal, he's verbally spoken with people at DBI, and they have said that they can have an extension. I have to ask for that in writing, so I need to send that in writing myself to him and to Dr. Williams so that we can get that in writing as well.
And hopefully, the auditors will come and then give us their report so that we can move on.
Yes, because we have had audit, change of auditors mid-straight, so to speak, and they will be returning hopefully within the next two weeks.
On the codification of the...
Of the ordinances.
Orders. What's got in that?
That is the cost. We do not have a single ordinance that has been codified according to state recommendations, and that was money that was approved during the budget process to codify all of our ordinances, which include noise ordinance, zoning subdivision, anything that's an ordinance, including our personnel policy, that also been included.
Now, when we say codified or codification, that means to put them in some kind of numbering sequence so that they're debid as a rank number, so forth?
Yes, and they're being reviewed by attorneys to make sure that everything is legal and up to date as well. And if there is something that has not been modified according to general statute, they'll also make us aware of that so that we can change it.
Primarily allows...
To make it easier to also find it when we go look up something. Okay, tax. Ms. Lang.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're going to be collecting report. It does not contain the UTS figures. They will be available later when we get that amended. Any questions regarding that report?
While you're hearing up for your busy season, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, definitely. Yes, indeed.
I noticed we didn't have it as IKEA's legal services fee this period.
So they did collect, we got five...
They were collecting money, they just wanted these owed to them.
So we got like five items, $631.29. Okay, that's good. We didn't have to spend any money getting them.
Yes, indeed, yes.
Okay, I believe we have a request for refund.
Yes, a last-minute submission, if you will, for a refund in the amount of $151.32.
And we see that all the paperwork is with it. Your registration, blade and sticker.
Sure, the tax will try to be in, of course.
Ready the old vehicle before new one.
Yes.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board on the amount of $151.32 being refunded?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that as pertaining to 113160, request a refund, number one, in the amount of $151.32. It approved. Second?
Motion's been made. Second, discussion? Hear none. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you. And I did have a note in there about the debt set off letters that, of course, were mailed as we do every fall, of course. Those individuals received those letters for delinquent taxes. With the debt set off program, we are kind of on the way in front that we can get any refund, income tax refund, as well as any lottery earnings, you know, at D and D. We've had a few payments trickle in. We'll upload those that have not paid into this week and next week into that clearinghouse program. So I just want to make the board aware of that, as well as the gap billing letters that were mailed out. As I mentioned not long ago in the future meeting, that was going to be something that taxpayers were going to get those bills for those vehicles at the department in the yard. We've sent about 46 letters out. So far, we not received any payment for any of those bills, if you will. So $623.54 was actually billed out for gap billing. Just want to make board aware of that. If problems running or people have questions, we invite them to call us. They're going to be a little perplexed as to getting that deal when they paid it at D and D and the penalty and that kind of thing. So just have them call us. We'll be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, is any other department reports? Okay, just a couple of articles of interest on your table. You had information from the Admiral Commission about their monthly impact report that you received, and it's coming up, the annual awards banquet and proverbs, and that is on Thursday, November 16th, at Purtup Cooperative Extension. All of us are invited, need RSVP by the November 7th. It is a very interesting program. They have always a good speaker, and you get to see commissioners from the 10 counties represented by the Admiral Commission. So I would encourage you to take the order and go if possible. Okay, Mike Callister. Good morning. Nice to see you. Been a while.
It's been a while, and we're finally getting to a point where we actually are going to start moving on the dirt, which I hope to...
I didn't think I'd see the day.
I didn't even, it's been a while. It's been a struggle. But I think that now that you've already given you the numbers, we did have, of course, we did have, we did project, the last big bidder, the bid was received on the 19th. We have those numbers. The contract one, which is Honey Pot Road and Forest Lane is a little under oath, and the Sprayville is a little overloaded, but we came out about, what difference, about $269,974.10 was owed between what we had posted back in, I think the last page I gave you was June of this year, or maybe earlier. And if you got the letter in front of you, you can also see a breakdown. Most of what has been paid today by the government, and a lot of that was work that was done in period drive and options and so forth that was done before this particular track was closed. We did, I did check on EnviroTech Unlimited, which was the most bidder. I got pretty good feedback from an engineer that worked with it on regulations, very similar projects. He had good words to say, but I haven't said he did good work with the record. I'm recommending that you award both contracts to EnviroTech, serve Unlimited Construction Services. that you, that you award both contracts to EnviroTech, Sir, Unlimited Construction Services out of Harbin Drift, and continue to find funding being available, and continue to find approval from the fund managers.
Okay, you heard what Melissa Callister has recommended. Do you have any questions for Melissa Callister?
How long has EnviroTech Unlimited been in business? How long has TA Living been in business? If you're aware of that.
TA Living has been in business since nineteen twenty-five, and EnviroTech, I think, has done around maybe about thirty years.
Thirty?
Yeah.
So it's not something that's just popped up?
No, no.
I don't have, I think it's a good choice. I mean, it only looks the best number of numbers as far as cost.
I was pleased with the heritage and things, everything that's going. The contractors are extremely busy at this moment. I was very pleased that we found that we'd work.
And we probably talk in three quarters of a million dollar difference due to property for both contracts.
And a lot of that's got to do with location. With location, we probably, the TMO is located in Goldsboro, so there's a lot of per diem that they've got to account, and of course, utilities is right down the road, probably thirty minutes.
A little longer than that, but...
Well, certainly.
What is the, is there any additional questions from the board? I entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the waste system contract to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services as recommended by our in-ring firm, Miss Blencher.
Okay, motion has been made. Can I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been properly made. Second, any additional discussion? Hearing none. Will vote on citizen system. So much money, we'll break our hand. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, it's approved. Form zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Have a safe trip. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Madam Chairman, just before we do that, on the financial specifics and revenue on the page three of fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Next to the last item, miscellaneous revenue. All right, we budgeted two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars for that as of the year date. We've poured in four thousand seven hundred two dollars worth over to two hundred thirteen dollars eighty-four cents. I'm just curious, where would most of that revenue come from?
I will have to look it up.
Certainly, it's better to have that on, on the revenue side, extra revenue coming in.
Oh, it's good, it's good.
No, you know where it's coming from.
Some of this was insurance money that was received, it appears. And there was also the Monsanto grant is the bulk of that money. That was for Gates for Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah.
That we accepted as a pass-through, and then we turned, then we wrote the check. And there was a reimbursement for an emergency management worker who had a grant that was paying for some bills, and we had paid for it. So the money went in here to offset some payments from last fiscal year.
There's the grants in the north here, part of it.
For some of it, because several of things, these things were to, some of this is listed as in batches, and I can't get into the batches themselves, but some of it has to do with some reimbursement and posting for period thirteen revenue.
I remember the Monsanto grant, because we did, you were guided previous year, and it comes to us, then we give it to the contract. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
It's a man of public hearing.
Public hearing, public hearing. Keep straight. Public hearing to deal with GATS programs.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we open up a public hearing regarding the GITS inter-regional transportation system grants. Second, that motion, Madam Chairman?
Motion's been made. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing. Patrice, I always enjoy when I get my book and see there's much reading to do.
I was making a mistake. I got it. Yes, this is the annual administrative grants and transportation where we pay the cost for the building and administrative staff. This year, it's about sixteen thousand less than previous years. There's a little cut across the state with some of the funding. But it's the same program that we, that we do every year for the administrative and the capital, it's to replace two vehicles that have met this life expectancy.
Okay, when you say you will cut sixteen thousand dollars, is there ways that we can, oh, avenues for money?
Well...
I know sometimes it takes a minute, gives a fact.
They are putting it in, I guess, in the next, when we're talking about enhanced transportation services where you apply operating money, which is what they're doing is, I guess, cutting it in straight and giving you an opportunity for systems to apply for operating funds, which we are looking for.
Okay, so it's kind of...
Kind of, yes.
I always do that, they give, I mean, they do it back in another way. Okay, certainly very interesting reading. GATS is very important to our citizens. I see the old road, all the cars, and the number of trips you take and passengers. It's very important to our time. And thank you for the work you do. Are there any questions from board members?
No questions. I would like to make a comment, just so the general public. Patrice is very adept, and she allows me to sit on that board, and I learn a lot from that. But I don't know that everyone is really familiar with Patrice with the fact that sometimes you're called upon to drop off someone, maybe pit, pit capping at the hospital, and subsequently they have to stay external hours because of their appointment, and it puts you on a bind, transportation lines. And I think we would probably like to hear a little bit of that, how you also combined that with working with DSS in getting these folks on.
Well, we have, of course, an annual plan that we put together as to what places we go and where we'll go. In addition to that, we are, since we're a county department, we work very closely with Gates County Social Services, and taking their clients, because if we don't take them, then their social workers have to leave work, and they have to go and pick them up and take them places. When we take them to other areas, and if they're not ready by the appointment time, if we have to leave, someone has to go back to get them. So it's either us or the actual audit employees. So it kind of cuts into some of the service plans that we do. But we try to do the best that we can or whatever, try to make sure that the social workers don't have to take times out of their schedules to go. For the most part, we have had a few clients that we've had to leave, but we'll go back to get them. It actually is just from a perspective of Medicaid, Medicaid has a requirement that if they are going to the nearest provider, the service has to be provided. So if the client stays over and it's overall time as a county, we have to pick them up. And we're a county department. We take that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And additionally, maybe the VA hospitals, sometimes we have VAs, a veteran that is stuck there, so.
The VA hospital's conditions are a lot better now that we have the one in Elizabeth City. It's not as far and go back and forth daily at Elizabeth City. Generally, don't have a lot of that, and we go to Hampton VA most of the time. The people are going to have extended stay. They know that ahead of time, but for the, for the one that they've added in Elizabeth City, it really helps.
Thank you, ma'am. I noticed on the grant that, as we always do, we have a local funding management for now, and I see for this first grant is sixty-seven thousand.
It's sixty-seven thousand, I think Tim was there for the whole process.
My question is, do you have a county manager? Do you know everybody there?
And it's not, she is fortunate. She can use other grants to match. So it's not necessarily all, it's not necessarily family money.
So we're going to have ways to get those?
Right.
Well, forty thousand of it is coming from the road fund. What we do is for the enhanced method of transportation, we, it's a process that we can give additional money. We take the forty thousand that we get from ITF, and we match the elderly grant to make it, turns to be eighty thousand, I guess, on a sense. So quite, it's only about twenty-seven thousand that we have to come up with, and you can come up with that out of the contract revenues that we get. Some of it is listed as, it says that you take it out of reserve, but what that is because there's no way to guarantee that we'll get this amount of revenue until we provide the service. So it says revenues in a sense, I mean, it says reserve to cover that, because you all sign off that you guaranteed that the money's paid.
And thank you, because you do a good job of getting the grants to help cover that I'll share our payments and all. Do we need to do these both separately?
This year, we can do it together.
Oh, we can do it together. I entertain a motion at this time to approve the annual community transportation administrative and capital grant application, as well as the enhanced mobility of senior and individuals with disabilities program grant application.
So move it, Madam Chairman.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Public hearing. Oh, God, you did come out of public hearing. Do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So move it.
Okay, motion's been made and second to come out of public hearing. At this time, we'll take the vote for the...
We're all in favor.
Yeah, we're all in favor of the FY twenty nineteen Animal Communication Transportation Administration and Capital Grant Application, as well as the Enhanced Mobility of Senior Individual Disability Program Grant Application. Does the person who made the motion still want to make that motion?
So move it.
In a second? I think we had two. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I apologize. I'm not on my game, and I think I'm watching the game while you speak to him. So, okay, moving on down. Customer Service Policy Amendments. This was brought to our attention last month in September due to changes in state that we had to come in line with ours, and the big difference, of course, was the, the number of days, the late date has the implemented due date, ten days, when we had been doing Elbow. But one of the state general statutes says it has begun in ten days.
On page eight of that policy is the statement that you requested Diane Hendrick to go back and put in writing so that you could read it and take a vote on the policy today. The statement's in the middle of the page and highlighted in yellow.
And that was the second hearing. Could you, if there was a question at our last meeting, on page eight. Okay, I'll entertain a motion concerning this change in policy. And the change in policy is that businesses that are privately contracted with a waste disposal company must provide customer service with a copy of their contract to receive a fifty percent reduction in their solid waste speed. The contract information must be updated ammually.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we amend our customer service policy as proposed at our last meeting, including the private business allowance for a fifty percent reduction once shown in their contract.
And a motion has been made. Can I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Any discussion?
When will this be effective? Is it still going to be January? I knew that had been the discussion at last meeting. Is it effective January first, December, today?
Well, if it's true...
December first?
Yeah, I would think December first.
Okay.
Do you, would you add that to your motion that affected December first, twenty seventeen? Would you approve that as your second? Okay, any other questions? Thank you for the point, and we do not have our effective date. Okay, is everyone prepared to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it is approved. Effective December first. Okay, next item, the agenda, is the out-of-control. We had a work session on October fourth, I believe, and we made some changes in our out-of-control policy. If you go through, the changes are highlighted in yellow. The first change that was made was that in human conditions under the definitions, "Pent full of feces, waterfall of algae, and dirt, moldy food, foul odor, unclean, decomposing, or dead animals, producing pungent odors and grass twelve inches of power." That was added to that.
I might add that persistent without nuisance ordinance.
Persistent without nuisance ordinance. Then on the next page, "Capital Shelter," the definition, "Constant access to sufficient shelter, three-sided walls, a roof, and a floor that sits above the ground, protecting from weather, ice, rain..." weather, ice, rain, snow, sleet, and sun. Barns and farm shelters are excluded from being required by a floor that sits above the ground." Okay, we eliminated quarantine fee, that is in 307.1G. And on the very last page, "By tethering," by standard change in tethering for dogs, no animal shall be chained outdoors, intended by a chain, cable, or tethering designed to be attached to a harness, deemed necessary by the animal control officer. The maximum weight for the chain or tether shall not exceed ten percent of the animal's body weight. All tethers shall be a minimum of ten feet in length and have a swivel at both ends to prevent twisting and tangling." They were the changes that we discussed in our work session. Any comments concerning those?
I think they were all incorporated as we.
As we intended.
Yes, and we have to have a public hearing on it.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the incorporated changes and have our county manager to self-own a hearing for next meeting within the, what is it, thirty-eight, whatever time that is.
Well, we don't have a second meeting this, okay, can we have it on Monday, if we can't have, can we get it done by Monday night? So we'll have a public hearing Monday, the, is it twentieth? Okay. So are you gonna put that, the approval of, I mean, to have the public hearing on November twentieth to all the Out of Control ordinance?
Yes, approve the Out of Control ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second and motion, ma'am, chairman.
Motion has been made, second, any questions? Okay, so at this time, we'll vote to concern that having scheduled the public hearing for the Out of Control ordinance to be on November the twentieth, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. And that is where the public has a right to comment, that's what a public hearing is for, so it is on November twentieth at seven o'clock. And people, everybody can speak, okay? And I'm sure we all will spread the word. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, historic court heist. Okay, that is, next, we heard from James Andreas, and he gave us three proposals. If you look at those, the first one is where the, the difference is, is how you help, if you have a complete tettering of the west wing, do you keep the roof on line or where you move the roof? The first one is the all-inclusive, where you, it's just.
The first one in your packet is the three hundred seventy-nine thousand one, that is the one that follows the package that ClearScape submitted with all of the metal supports that would be designed specifically for this building, that would support the roof. The second one is the option that James Andreas provided from a moving company that would hold up the roof. And the third option that is in your packet is the one that would recommend tearing down the roof over the west wing and starting from scratch, so building from the bottom up.
Can I, can you give us a recommendation?
ClearScape's is number one.
They're recommended.
Well, that is what they had provided in the initial communication, when then you ask us to go back and find out what were other options, so the other two options are to hold it up as recommended by the house mover or to tear down completely and start over.
ClearScape also is questioning the twenty percent markup, have you made any contact with Andreas on that?
No, but it's also ClearScape's practice in the past based on bills to also include twenty percent markup.
I wish they had made each one of these something different, it's a little easier to keep up with.
Well, there are different things on each, on them. And there are different, the second one, for example, says house mover option. The last one says roof removal.
Well, it's in the, well, it's.
On the first, on the cover page.
Okay. The cover page is how.
A difference, that's a hundred thousand dollars for each one.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I was, it's amazing that they're so similar in price. From the ones that go with the steel concrete, it's only three thousand dollars more than the one where you have the ice moved, I would call it might have been a lot cheaper, but I happen to have all of that. And then the complete tettering is just fifteen thousand cheaper.
Historic society, where they put it.
I'm no longer president of this historic society.
I never have been.
They just wanted done.
Yeah, we're talking, I would make, I would like to see this done, I think that in the time that I have been keeping up with this, the price has probably at least doubled. It seems like we're kind of being held hostage, but whether we can get some of them, I don't want to go back through the process and try and do, start all over again, get someone else, you know, it's been, sitting over there at ISO for, I don't know, a hundred years now, six, seven years, and until we get something done there, it's going to look that way and everybody comes through gateless, first thing to see. And that they have provided us something I think would be very useful in, in moving forward, and they've forgotten to approve the contract, but she has provided us one of us with a plan of what the building will be used for, and I know this comes up to a question to all of us sometimes, from anybody in the public, why are you doing this? Am I just tearing down and making progress? But this is not a, something being done just to be doing it, because it's one of the oldest court heists left in the state. It's, there will be use by the county, and there'll be several offices put in there, there'll be, the county manager's office will probably move over there, the commissioner's meeting will probably move over there, there are just several different events that will be placed in there, of course, we have a patient room, a fader room, over that for historical purposes, and that's just, I'm glad to see that, I appreciate that, but I think we need to go ahead and approve one of these and get.
And we also have a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars allocated.
We have a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars left in our line item.
So we're gonna need to come up with two hundred thousand.
And I think, I cannot speak for any, for the historic society, but they might think of donation.
I think once you get, see some progress being made over there, we may get more than that donation.
And also, there are potentials for at least some help through Covington, and I think we can get some help from them, that's a grant, and the, I'm not sure if I said it, but there are a couple potentials that we can, maybe as avenues as well.
Are we on a platform?
Yes, we are, and I think that did.
Well, the historical society would have, there's one, I believe, only the historical society can apply for.
And what is?
The one, I believe, the county can apply for, I'll have to double check on that one.
And I think the historical society, like the fader room, I think they are planning on doing that, because they had, you know, Saxton's memorabilia and all, but I can't speak for them, but I know that he will receive money from the General Assembly and all for them. So. Okay, what is the pleasure of the group? I kind of agree with Mr. Felton, we've kicked this ball down too long, we make a decision to go forward. And concerning, we do need more office space, but, I mean, people are on top of each other in some of our offices.
And it's charged very heavily, so again, I'll just reiterate what Commissioner Felton said, the county manager. Because I think once the, our citizens realize what's gonna happen there and the money's gonna save them longer. No, I'll make a motion.
Okay, you might make a motion, but proceed, do you have a, which plan?
Yeah, like I say, all plans same, and I certainly wanna ride the back of Commissioner Felton on the twenty percent, as I had reviewed this, I saw twenty percent everywhere, but then each one, but I think for recommendation one, in my mind, I would highlight.
That's the one that's the three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar one. Now, Billings Inspector is also here, if anyone would like to ask him questions, I'm sorry, I did not say that earlier, because I don't know if that was actually a motion or not, but.
And I think that's a great idea, because since Commissioner was here, certainly like to hear from him.
For most of us, this is kind of weird. You have seen the recommendations that have been made?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, your opinion on the three options?
In construction, you got three basic categories, you need plan requirements, I mean, owner requirements, budget, and schedule. Leaving the roof there is one, and he on two is not really those, because you might take the home mover option and something there wrong and you got to tear the roof down anyway, or the metal supports. Doing it from scratch, you take out all of all the names, the contractor's gonna have all the control, and you know everything going in, what the schedule's gonna be, what the budget's gonna be. And also, the roof, you know it's gonna be done right, that you're never gonna have any problems with it in the future on that wing, so to me, I can't see any other recommendation but going back that.
Complete tettering.
Complete tettering.
I believe you spoke with Ree Thomas, and he said it would be okay for us to.
Correct, Ree Thomas said that because of all the work that had been done, that he did not have a problem from a personal standpoint or from the state historical office's standpoint, if the entire west wing was rebuilt, including the roof.
That's option three on here that we have.
Correct, in the pack, in the order that you have them in, yes, it is option three.
And that's a change of one.
And James Andreas did say, if you'll notice what he did throughout the bids, he broke it down by man hours, so of course, if he estimates it takes thirty hours and it only takes twenty, we will only pay for the twenty hours, but if it takes forty, we can pay for the thirty.
Commissioner certainly appreciates that expertise.
Okay, do you have additional questions for Mr. Smith?
I don't, it's very well explained, and I certainly want to amend my motion to option number three.
Okay, you're putting that as a motion?
Yes, proceed with option three.
The motion's been made, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, are we prepared to vote? Okay, let's show, I'll show a hand, see the right hand, all those in favor say aye, raise the right hand. Okay, the vote is four zero, so we have approved, go ahead with Plan Three.
Madam, do you have any idea of where you start, Dave, for him to accept it?
No, I do not, I will talk with him, then what time we get finished today, it might be tomorrow, I'll contact James Andreas and bring it back, budget amendment, it's not just for this, but also for the wastewater at our November meeting.
Okay, and.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
And we will try to contact, make some contacts if I can, as well, between I and Ben, see what we have, if we, the elders. Okay, next item, move it to Nibis, do we need to take a stretch break? Okay, Nibis, surplus request, we have some flip phones, slide phones that are, that are, we are, I'm asking that they do destroy due to age and it is allowed under the procurement policy. Okay, do I hear a motion to, we know these are not numbered, but the request for construction of the six phones and.
That's all it is, six phones.
Okay, all six phones.
How do we destroy?
Smash and hammer.
There'll be, there'll be ran over, smashed with hammers, torn apart, that's.
Recycling.
We can still, we still need to probably take them apart, this will be on the second because of the, even though from what I can see, there's not really anything on the phone, there's no number saved or anything like that, but they do not work, they do not hold charge, you cannot buy matters.
We'll have access to the furnace.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'm, I'm championing that we dispose of the phones, the surplus phones as presented in our surplus record.
Okay, I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am, second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, so y'all can start the show. Okay, and question for surplus, this is a two thousand and eight Chevy Colorado, five-cylinder, one hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-eight miles, set, want to sell it on the dot, like gov dot deals, with a minimum bid of a five hundred dollars. And this was a truck bought by the county in two thousand and eight.
Well, minimum value of it. I'll make a motion that we list the two thousand eight Chevy Colorado as a question in the surplus assets record.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that is approved. Now, we have a two thousand and six Chevy Colorado, five cylinders, eight thousand two hundred twenty-eight miles, purchased with county funds, and we recommend we sell this on gov dot deals, minimum bid being eight hundred dollars. What is the pleasure of the group?
I'll make a motion that we surplus the two thousand and six Chevy Colorado as.
I'll make a motion that we surplus the two thousand and six Chevy, Chevy Colorado as a question of the surplus, this position, right?
A second? Motion's been seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Now, we have a nineteen eighty-eight Ford F seven hundred duck, duck truck, with a hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine miles on it. We don't know what bus we'd use to purchase it, uh, but we recommend a minimum bid on gov dot deals for twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, maybe, so.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we're getting a little ridiculous.
Oh, well, hey, all of those are not in the parking lot, by the way.
Okay, we have next, a recommendation from Mrs. Holly, the Gates County E S S Director. She is proposing that Christie Cochran be appointed as a parent representative on our Gates County Community Child Protection Team. It, it is required to have a parent on that team, and Miss Cochran could fill that role, was, was in the board.
I have a question for you.
Okay, you have a question, Ms. Holly, would you like to step to the podium?
I'm not opposed to this, but I certainly would like to know, have we, that's based on her, I'm for sure you have.
Yes, and she has agreed, matter of fact, she was justified to serve on the Gates County Child Fatality Prevention Team. And the Gates County Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team, we are joined, we have our meetings at the same time.
Okay, so now, is a meet for? None of them?
It's combined.
Okay, well, that's, that was my question, because I want to make sure that she was aware, she needs to meet, but it's only one meet.
Yes, she's aware.
Okay.
But side one, we approve your, but she has lost her child.
That's correct.
Okay, so, motion has been made, and, no, no motion's been made.
Uh, I'll make a motion that is properly appointed, uh, to be appointed to the Gates County Community Child Protection Team as a question. Now, seconded motion, I.
Motion's been made, a second, and for a discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Christmas lunch, nothing had Thanksgiving.
There's, and Ms. Andrews cannot be here today due to staff shortage and customer service. She asked that, there are two options that the committee decided upon. The first is option one, county offices to be closed from three to five on Friday, December fifteenth. And that if the offices are closed and employees choose not to attend, then they use leave time for those two hours. And if the offices, for, for option two, if the offices are not closed, then, then will be a lunch from twelve to two for a floating luncheon. And then they are also asking that commissioners recover the main meat.
And I think we do that every year, that we have provided the meat for. But twelve to two is a, if it's lunch.
In that way, we're not really close to the offices, for, for not everyone would not be aware, they might travel some distance to do some county business and find them closer to the.
Also, people like to, sometimes, their hot legs, pay stuff, and the war and everything, get it straight, taxes, all that. Is it recommendation of board that we will pay for the main meat and that we, our preference is option one?
Well, option one is for three to five.
I know, option two.
Which one?
Yeah, it's option two, I'm sorry, twelve noon to two.
Twelve to, spot on, uh, good, ma'am. I'll make a motion that we.
I think, great big motion, okay. Uh, motion has been made, properly seconded, that we have the Christmas lunch from twelve to two at the county extension on December fifteenth, and that commissioners will pay for the meat. Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, and I would encourage all, um, staff to attend those. Commissioners are generally there, it's a time to socialize, a personal, for a while, and, um, you can work at all, I think, in your offices, to maintain your offices and also come.
Well, everyone is required to take a lunch hour, if you like.
Yeah, everybody has to take a lunch hour, so take it with us. We certainly would enjoy seeing you. Okay, uh, the next one is the lottery application, and that is.
Did you add it into the group? Did you add it into the group? I know it's not in the electronic packet.
We have it, we have it, I know.
The same application that you, that we approve each year, the commissioners have to formally approve it in order for us to receive our lottery funding each year. Lottery funding is used to pay down the current school debt that we have.
It was interesting, I saw on the second page, or that we receive, the minds that people get in lottery revenue. Now, of course, it's not a whole list, but, uh, look, certainly helps us, I think, to denizen. Certainly, this is something I don't, can't see that it's controversial, uh, that, uh, what is, I'll entertain a motion.
I see it controversial if you compare it to Burke County, but anyway.
Well, it's controversial when you compare it to, um, some of those that get a tremendous amount.
Yes, based on student population.
I'm, Jim, I have a motion that approves the made, uh, lottery applications for funding, uh, proceeds for county. Seconded motion, I, Jim.
Okay, a motion's been made, a second, to approve the application for the public school bill and capital fund for the North Carolina Educational Lobby, uh, lottery for next year. Uh, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, we will do that. Okay, and we have budget amendments to do, and the budget amendments are. Do we have the copies of the budget amendment?
Just come pages in front of the super column.
There's two, number ten and number eleven. Number ten is a request from water extension to appropriate funds from the school age childcare to, from their fund balance to the school age childcare line item to replace a four H shed, and then amount of six thousand dollars.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion then, for approval of Budget Amendment Number Ten, in the, uh, minus six thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
I'm sorry, I take that, still second on ten. I'll second, I'll second any motion.
Okay, a motion's been made, properly seconded, uh, to approve Budget Amendment Number Ten. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, Budget Amendment, I love it.
Eleven is, uh, additional funding was received for the crisis intervention program for the Department of Social Services in the amount of five thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, this request, uh, five thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion had been made, properly seconded, any discussion?
Uh, a question, along with discussion, and maybe Ms. Holly can ask, is this also a part of Trillium's righteousness intervention?
No, that allocation is from the state, and social services are just not uncommon to receive more than one during the year.
Trillium, thank you.
Okay, motion's been made, properly seconded, to approve Amendment Number Eleven, uh, to provide additional funds to the crisis intervention program. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, it passes. Okay, um, anything else that needs to be brought for us?
I'm, I'm, Jim, I, I wanted to bring this up, I've got it on the agenda, but I've been made aware of that, the, uh, what we call swap houses at the convenience sites, that they were, the one in Sunbury was, was removed because of the roof leakage and the damage to the floor. And I've had numerous citizens and site workers to ask me about that. It was really providing a service to the citizens of the county that, uh, that was really beneficial. Would like to see it come back. I've even had some to say that, uh, they could have fixed it for themselves. They could have fixed it because it was only about a, uh, a small area, it was not that much of a, of a problem to put, uh, a new piece of plywood wood in there. And, uh, also, when we don't have those houses, uh, things that are gonna be thrown away are put into the dumpster, which we have to pay, uh, for disposal of. So, so, um, you know, it, it really, uh, helps the county save money by having those houses there, because it reduces the tonnage that we have. So, I really would like to see us, uh, work towards bringing back those, the, uh, they say, oh, those swap house, or whatever we call them.
Shop.
Shop shops or whatever, and, uh, so that the citizens can put things in there that can be used by others, uh, but they don't wanna, you know, they're, they're no good to them. But someone else can use them, and, uh, that way we can save on tonnage as well as, and provide services, service to those citizens that are gonna use them.
I think probably the one in Sunbury is the only one that was in the county one.
The one in Sunbury was the only one remaining in all three counties from a grant that purchased them. When Angel White contacted me, she said no one, she'd been several times, there was never anything in there, the roof was leaking, the floor was falling in, and it was damaged to the wall. And, uh, I contacted, um, the other two people who were on the P C G committee from our county, and we decided that not to repair it, it was gonna cost over three thousand dollars that the county would have to pay for. And there are other places now that they can recycle their materials, they can take it to the, um, Sunbury Boutique, which is, if you remember, a couple months ago, Mr. Milton Carter came in, wrote to Ms. Johnson, and asked to put up signs to encourage people to donate to there or to donate to other causes. So, there are other places that people can recycle.
I know personally, I've been checking on that swap shop in Sunbury, and it didn't have anything in it.
Well, well, I did those, people take it out as soon as they get, they put it in there, it doesn't have time until they're ready. So, yeah, we don't recognize it too many times, but there are people that are waiting for those things, and they can use them, and, uh, who are in need of those types of things, so, uh, you know, and when, when they take them to other places, many times they recycle, resell them, and whatever. So, uh, it started with, it was a good project to help those in need, and, uh, you know, we have opportunity to bring it back, or if I go grant another one, I think that would be a good thing for the citizens of the county, because I'm, I, I've been in, I've made quite a few inquiries regarding that. Why do you pay it, you know, just for a great service, so, uh, I'm gonna ask the county manager to take a look at that, see if there's something available.
And what format, because it's gonna have to come from the solid waste fund, which last year, we did not collect enough fees to pay it, so we had to pay it on the fund balance.
Solid waste fund for what? For, you need to purchase another one?
Yes.
Well, I'm not asking to purchase another one, I mean, you said we got that into a grant.
And that, there are no more grants for that, that was from the state grant, I want to understand.
The one that we gathered up, they were already disposed of? Well, I, do you think Angel would have any knowledge of possibility of another one being available?
No, like I said, that was the only one remaining in the area.
All right, well, uh, I'm not gonna propose that we buy one, but certainly, uh, I think it's something to keep in mind, is a good service for the county.
Okay, so noted, it'll be noted in the minutes. Okay, um, and that, that ends, uh, new business, is, uh, anything else?
Madam Chairman, I would like to, uh, certainly bring it to the attention of, of our citizens and our commissioners, too. I had an opportunity, uh, to discuss this with, uh, with anyone, because it brought my attention that, uh, there are some folks who would like to approach us about a carapace for teenagers. And so, something to think about, and like to put it out here so that folks can communicate with us and see if there is a need for that, and, uh, and put it proper.
Uh, anything else, any other comments, uh, any citizen comments? Yes, sir?
Uh, it's kind of a question on the, not on that.
Could you tell us your name?
James Jordan, from York.
And, so, we can get it on the record.
Okay, it's, I, it's more questions, James Jordan from York. Uh, when they let, when you were talking about the animal policy and the tethering of the animal, did you all say a time constraint or anything? I didn't understand, was there, like, the animals tethered by, legally by, what he's supposed to be tethered with, a harness?
Harness and swivel.
Is there a time limit that, was there any time limits on that?
There was not one mentioned in that, uh, that, and that's something we need to probably bring up, uh, at the public.
Okay, and the other one was the lady talking about the nursing homes, she did a good job, and I was unclear. She was indicating that one of the nursing homes had a lot of violations, she didn't say it that way, but indicated that way. And a lot of us are gonna be in a nursing home one day, I hope not, but if you remember in Florida, the nursing home during the hurricane, I think it was eight died, because they didn't have backup generators, they didn't move them when they should have, um, and they're closed. And they, I think there's a lot more, forty-two of them they were looking at in Florida. But I'm just saying, if these, if this nursing home keeps violating things, because it might not seem important to, but if you don't get your medicine, or you don't get proper food, that's, there's nothing you can do but be waited on, and if you can't do anything about it, if they keep violating, is what I'm getting at, would something make them do the right thing, and if they don't do the right thing, would something say, hey, look, you got this amount of time to do this, if you don't do it, we're closing you down?
The state, the state does have a right to close and dying, because concerning the generators, I mean, they can show them down if their violations are grievous enough to do that. Uh, or give them a plan of action that they have to comply with so many days, weeks, whatever. Um, emergency plan, that's something, uh, maybe Billy Wynn, would, does he know that each of them have a plan or asks?
That was one of the things that they highlighted as well.
Good, yeah, they highlight to make sure there is an emergency plan, because of, if it's, you know, our roads flood sometimes, and they're inaccessible, and especially what used to be Guyanese, you know, there is a low place in that road without getting there. So, they do need to have a plan of action.
Okay.
And so, that's something that needs to be looked into.
Well, just concerned for, for everyone.
And because they can't, don't have a voice.
Yeah, and my grandmother, she, she was in one of Newport News, and she fell, and we didn't know about it, and she died, and, uh, you know, we didn't know anything about nursing homes at the time, that was years ago, but we didn't know how bad things were, we just didn't know, and, you know, it's, uh, it's a big deal.
And you need to have, and a lot of these people do not have an advocate or a child or a, someone to lobby on their behalf. And so, it is important for us to have these committees, um. And so it is important for us to have these committees and for, to have eyes and ears watching and looking, plus the state regularly inspect some as well. But certainly, we, we don't want to see any elderly neglecting, because hopefully all of us get to be elderly.
Okay, I just wanted to.
This may be a comment on this, but I, uh, I believe the regional director through the Alamo Commission, which I believe is.
Randy.
Jordan, uh, that authority, they have the authority to penalize or even possibly shut down for violations that are not taken care of, so that is in place.
And if, if there's something really going on that's really bad, would you all be aware of it, too? Would you all get those vibes a little bit, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And I'll, that's, thank you, Mr. York. No, excuse me, it's from you. So many of yours, really, you are. Okay, well, we'll start with commissioners' comments, I think I'll start this end and go to that end this week. Thanks to all of you for coming, I do have a person here from my area of the county, and I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Jordan for being here. And, um, but we appreciate each and every one of you, um, and like I said, we are your, um, if you have concerns or like things in county, contact us, that's what we're here for. As, um, we move into holiday season, I hope that we can have charity for all in our, in the next months and in, that we have, in November and December and throughout the coming year. Uh, of course, um, as all of us, we are concerned about the events in New York that occurred, um, in the afternoon yesterday. We need always to be vigilant of our surroundings and be aware of what is happening, and, um, you know, we need to pray for our country, our state, and our county.
Yes, indeed. I, uh, I, I concur with all those things that Commissioner Harper said. I do think our citizens will come in and be a part of the commission meeting, because it all starts here at the local level, and, um, you know, we go up to state, federal, and so forth. But, um, just thanks for being here, being a part of it, and making sure that we make decisions that are decisions that the citizens have got a benefit from and, uh, and really appreciate. So have a good day, keep our nation in prayer, if you need it.
I thank you, too, for your attendance and your diligence and the interest in, in county business. I also want to make a, have a, a nice one, I guess, or just a reminder that November the eleventh is Veterans Day. It happens to occur on Saturday this year. The Historical Society has been putting on a program for the veterans for the last several years. There will be another one here this Saturday, uh, next Saturday, Saturday week. And I just encourage everyone to attend and to remember the service that these veterans have done for us. They give us the privilege of being able to sit in here today and not have to worry too much about somebody coming through that door and doing harm. But just remember, these, all of these men and women that will be showing up in here Saturday morning at eleven o'clock, and come out and just give them your all, just tell them thank you. They would be, it'd be very much appreciated.
I want to piggyback everyone else's, thank you certainly for your attendance and, and the input, but primarily for giving us calls and letting us know what's on your mind. Therefore, it really makes our decisions easier, and we do look for the easy way out when we make those decisions, but we do want to make the right one. I would be amiss if I did not thank all of my colleagues here as commissioners, but our county manager and county clerk as well, for the job that they do that makes our jobs a little bit easier in, in reaching the decisions that you want, so thank you.
Madam Chairman, one more thing, on the Veterans Day, the speaker this year is Stuart Riddick. Some of you remember him, I'm sure he's a, a year younger than I am, but he grew up in the county, right here on, uh, High Street, I'm not High Street, uh, Lake Street. And he spent his working years in, in service, he's a colonel, a retired colonel, and he will be back making the main speech on Saturday.
Okay, at this time, uh, we need to build a closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one four three, dash three one eight, eleven A for legal economic development, and person nail. Maybe not all of those, but anyway, um, do I have a motion?
So.
That motion has been made, except all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break at this time. I'll entertain a motion to come out and close session.
So.
Okay, a motion has been made promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will recess until November twentieth at seven P M. Okay, have a great afternoon.